Good evening, welcome to the Fall River Community Media Studios located on the campus of Bristol Community College. FRC Media along with our online community news resource, FRC Connect, is pleased to sponsor tonight's forum featuring the candidates running for city council in Fall River. My name is Keith Tebow, I'm the Director of FRC Media, and I'll be serving as moderator for tonight's event. We decided to sponsor two city council forums where we split the candidates into two panels of nine candidates each. The candidates were chosen at random based on the results of the September 22 preliminary election. The first forum was held this past Monday, October 19th. The candidates who are joining us tonight are, in alphabetical order, Richard Cabaseras, Joseph Camara, Stephen Camara, Jason Camaniti, Emerald Godet, Leo Pelletier, Linda Pereira, and Joshua Silva. City Councilor Dan Rego was also invited to participate in tonight's forum. Also joining us tonight is a panel of journalists who will be asking the questions of the candidates. They are, from left to right, Donna Mata, Community Editor-in-Chief of FRC Connect, Michael Holzman, Reporter for the Herald News, Pam Martin of FRG TV, and Alan Zarick, News Anchor and Reporter for WSAR Radio. Thank you all for joining us as well. The format of tonight's forum is as follows. The forum will last 90 minutes. There will be no opening statements, but each candidate will be allowed a two-minute closing statement. Each candidate will answer every question posed by our panelists, and will have 90 seconds to answer each question. There will be no rebuttals. Prior to each question, we will randomly draw a candidate's name, and that candidate will respond to the question first. After that candidate answers the question, we'll go, the way you're viewing it, from right to left, all the way around our panel until all the candidates answer the question. No candidate will be asked to answer a question first more than once. In the event that all candidates were not selected to answer a question first, there will be another drawing from those remaining, and that candidate will offer his or her closing statement first. And again, after that closing statement, we'll go around the panel as we did during our question segment. Okay, I guess we're ready to go, and we will begin with our first question, which will be asked by Donna Mata of FRC Connect, and will go to Joseph Camara. Donna?
Hello, thank you for coming. The question I have, and I put a lot of thought into this because a lot of the issues have already been discussed in other forums. So, the average Fall River resident has been very concerned about trash and purple bags, economic development, education, and the housing problems that we have here in the city. Those are four areas that they've showed concern about. What do you think the fifth most important area is facing the average Fall River resident?
Can you repeat the forum again, please? When you say "housing problems," what do you mean as far as housing problems?
Well, just the fees for the trash, the overcrowding, anything with housing, economic development, job creation, all that, education, and economic development. What is the fifth most important issue facing the average Fall River resident?
It most definitely is about safety. I think people in Fall River want to make sure that when they walk out to the streets, and when they attend the restaurants in the city, and when they leave their homes, they want to feel safe. And the city is doing everything it can to make sure that it maintains a safe police department and protects people from any fire that they may have to the fire department. Unfortunately, back in 2009, this city suffered nine C cuts, and there was drastic changes to both those departments. I don't think the city of Fall River has recovered from the nine C cuts, but we have made it our priority to continue to increase our police department, continue to increase the fire department, continue to upgrade the apparatus as much as possible, and we're continuing to do that now. But I think the fifth most important thing, priority that people have on their minds, without question, is public safety. They want to know that when they leave their home, they're safe, they're going to be safe, and when they have company, that they don't have to worry about anything like that, and that their children are safe in all aspects of everything they do. So I think that's the most important one. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we go to our next candidate, I want to welcome Councilor Dan Rego, who did join us tonight. Councilor, thank you for joining us. Our next respondent will be Stephen Camara.
And thank you to FRC Media, FRC Connect, and to the panelists, and to the candidates, and to the public for tuning in. I agree with Council President Camara. Public safety is probably the key issue that we, as want-to-be elected officials and those who are elected officials, need to address. But I think the issue that is most important for the residents of Fall River to be addressing is the issue of despair. And it's despair that relates to their concern about safety, but it's also their concern about what comes next. Are they going to be able to put food on the table for their families? Are they going to be able to address the epidemic situation that we face in our city with drug abuse? And are their children going to get through high school without being tempted by these terrible drugs that are out there? And are we going to be able to overcome the sense that we can't make our city great? We need to overcome despair. We need to think about how do we become a city that thinks about itself in an optimistic way, in a hopeful way. So I think that while all of the issues of public safety, and public education, and trash, and all of that is so very important, I think that we need to come to grips with how do we become an optimistic city again, so that we can become a great city again.
Thank you. Mr. Camaniti.
I'd like to thank as well, the FRG TV and the panel for being here, as well as my colleagues. I'm going to have to agree on public safety. That's why I've been pushing so hard in my campaign to try to get public safety to the forefront of what we've been talking about, because I felt it wasn't being talked about enough. The police, I mean, we do have top-notch police, top-notch fire, but they don't have the equipment, and they don't have the things that they need to effectively and efficiently do their job. They're doing it on a shoestring right now, and that's unfortunate. Another issue I see is that the city council has not had public safety meetings on a regular basis for the last probably two terms or so. The last person almost never had one until he was forced to have one. That's something that I would push for, is to have public safety meetings on a regular basis, and bring these around to the multiple locations in the city like we used to have, bring them into the senior high-rises, bring them into the places where people are at, and talk about these issues, and ask people what the problems are. Bring Kamochiko, bring the Chief of Police, bring the Chief of Fire, and find out what the real issues are, and give them the solutions from the people, and just have a dialogue with the people, with the Public Safety Committee. That's something that I'd like to see happen.
Thank you. Mr. Godet.
I'd say the major problem that we have is the shortage of money available to go out. I believe that we have sufficient money, but we have to check and see how it's being spent. I suggest that the city council go through every single contract, and look at the things that were given away years ago when things were good. When the factories were here, and we had the money coming in, I was one of the city councillors who was very generous and very graceful to the city employees. We gave them just about everything they needed. Now there's a shortage of money. The slum lords are turning, come in, the people who want to work left when the factories left. And out of this, the slum lords have come in, and they've brought in the people who actually are not contributing towards our city. I think what we have to do now is to take care of the residents of the city, and give them some sort of an abatement. And as I said, if they work here and they live here, they should get an abatement in their taxes. I don't think that actually we, the majority of the people who run our city do not live in our city. Most of the department heads come from out of town. Most of the public safety people come from out of town. I think what we have to do is, we have to take care of our own. We have to give abatements, we have to give stipends to those people who live in Fall River and who work in Fall River. You've got to take care of your own, and that's what I propose to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pelletier.
Thank you. I'd like to thank FRC for putting us on tonight. And I would have to agree that the most, one of the most important things is the fire and police, and, you know, when you sit down, you talk about the household fee, and what that would do if we didn't have it right now, it's going to be another situation, but to say that we will cut 25 police and maybe 15, 20 firemen, it's absolutely wrong. So that's very concerning. And the other thing that we have, not enough jobs in Fall River. A lot of people are concerned about putting food on the table and not working. I know we've got Amazon that did come up to the city, and I, myself, being a council for some time, helped create jobs here in the city in Fall River by voting for basically all the tiffs that come in front of me. Even Amazon, we voted for all that as well. So I think the most important things out there is make sure our people are working. And with that, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Pereira.
Hi, good evening. Thank you to FRC Media, thank you to the panelists, to the candidates and incumbents that are here, and to those listening at home. I think one of the biggest problems that Fall River has is image. I think that the negativity that spews in the community holds us back from talking about the positive things that we have in the city. The $10 fee was a tough vote for me. It's costing me a lot of money, just like it is everybody else. But to do that kept police and fire, and if police and fire are important and the backbone of our community, sometimes we have to take votes that are difficult, but they're the right vote. I had a man say to me, "You know, Mrs. Pereira, I don't care if you cut police because I don't need the police." I'm a pretty good person. I've never had a police officer knock at my door for something that I've done wrong. But when my home was broken into a while ago, and every single drawer in my house was flipped upside down, and a safe was broken into, I needed to call the police. So it's not that you need the police because you are not a law-abiding citizen. When you're in trouble, you need the police to come and help you. So to me, police, fire is important, and the image of our community. If you want people to come in here, come to our community, be a partner in our community, then you need to change the image and stop the negativity. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rego.
Well, thank you very much for R.C. Media, the panelists, and all those involved that created this forum. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. I've been listening to a couple of my colleagues and the candidates respond to a question that, we could answer that question in so many ways, but one thing that sticks out in my mind is confidence. I think right now, the residents of the city of Fall River are looking for confidence in the way the city is running. And that spews into public safety. Where's the funding? Like my colleague to my right just said, we had to take a tough vote. That was to take a tough vote, because in all reality, we had to fund money that was no longer coming in. So the confidence that the people have is basically, well, where's the money? Why do we have to worry about, how does trash fall into the category of public safety, police, and fire? But I'm going to work hard, along with the city council, whoever we may be, is to build that confidence in the community, and give them hope, so this way we can have some new growth, this way we can fund our public safety, and then we can actually look at the schooling in our community. But there's multiple areas.
Thank you. Mr. Silva.
Yes, I want to thank FRC for this opportunity, and the other candidates, and the panelists that are here. I think the biggest issue Fall River has, and it relates to every other issue, is the status quo in this city, and we need a big change in Fall River, because as you just heard two incumbents tell us, that they had to take a hard vote to pass a sanitation fee so that we could pay for public safety. I, myself, opted out of the sanitation program with the city. My public safety shouldn't be threatened at all, or any other resident, if I made that choice. So for them to make that correlation, that's part of why we have a lot of negativity in Fall River, because those kind of statements scare people, and that takes away their confidence in the leaders of the city. So that's the problem, is we need a big turnover and a big change in the way things are done in this city, and there's no doubt about it. We shouldn't be scaring people every year, buy bags, or else we're going to lay off firemen. Pay the sanitation fee, or we're going to lay off fire, police, and schoolteachers. It's two totally different problems. A solution to the trash issue is for the city to get out of the trash business, and then we won't have this problem. But that's my biggest problem. If we change the status quo, all these issues are going to change, because we've been doing the same thing for way too long, and we can see the results. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cabaseras.
I believe the answer to your question would be public safety, as many of the other people at the table said today. I think that the police and the fire department are suffering from multiple issues, whether it be manpower, whether it be equipment, whether it be vehicles, and they need additional funding in order to be able to get those things. As a city council, we should be looking towards generating additional revenue in order to be able to come up with ways in order to be able to fund those departments. The police department needs an additional 12 police officers. The fire department, after the SAFER grant, is still going to need an additional 15 officers. Vehicles on both sides need to be replaced, and we need to have a solution in order to be able to do that. And simply, they should be budget line items, not bonding, in order to be able to cover those vehicles. But unfortunately, we're in a situation where we need to come up with a solution very quickly, and the only way that we can come with that money really, really quickly is through bonding. And equipment, we're seeing a huge equipment gap on the fire department's side. I was very fortunate enough to serve as a firefighter here in Fall River, and I got to see public safety firsthand. I was laid off due to SAFER grant cuts in 2014. I was among the first to respond to the King Philip Mill fire, the first King Philip Mill fire that we had. And when I responded to that fire, if we had less firefighters on the scene, we would have never stopped it and contained it to that one building. We could have had city blocks go up. So the city was very fortunate that we had a fire department of that size, and we need to continue getting back to 200.
Thank you. Our next question will be asked by Michael Holzman of the Herald News, and that question will be asked first to Stephen Camara.
Some have suggested improvements need to be made with the city councils, standing committees, based on how regularly they meet and what they accomplish. How would you assess this process, and the role of the council president with this process?
Well, interestingly, during the time when I was the city council president, we did do a consolidation of committees, and we brought about some changes that I think were very appropriate. In particular, at that time, we had a Department of Health and Human Services, but yet we had no committee on Health and Human Services. So one was established. I think we need to evaluate, again, what are the critical issues that are facing us? I think we all learned recently from a youth forum that was held at the Cust Middle School, that the issues facing youth are critical to youth, but they're also critical to Fall River's future. So I think having a committee now that focuses on youth issues would be very important. I know there were some statements made about getting a youth on the council, or even giving them votes. You know, those things are pie in the sky. You can't, you can't give a non-elected person a vote, but certainly you can bring them into the process. And by the way, some council meetings go to 11 o'clock or 11:30, and kids should be home getting their sleep so they have a good night, a good day at school. But I think that that's the kind of thing that we need to do. We need to look at what are the critical issues facing us now, keep those committees that are addressing those issues, and create new committees. And I think also getting input from the members of the council as to what their strengths are. If they have strengths that they want to be applied to a particular committee, that's something that needs to be researched as well.
Thank you. Mr. Camaniti.
As I just mentioned in my last discussion, it was about the public safety issue. The Public Safety Committee hasn't met regularly in a very long time. There's probably other committees that don't meet as well, and it's pretty much up to the chair of the committee as to whether they meet or not, and when they meet. Maybe that's something that the president has to come down a little harder on and say, you need to meet, this is a more, this is a very important topic, that's why we have a standing committee for it, get out there and meet, that type of thing. I'd like to see the skill set of the people on the council determine who is actually getting the roles, and that's probably a little bit what they're doing, but it's also a little bit politics, who votes for who, that sort of thing. So I mean, those are the types of things that I'd like to see. It depends a lot on the president, who votes for who, that sort of, so that's what I'd like to see.
Thank you. Mr. Godet.
Well, I guess this proves what I've said, that the incumbent city councillors don't seem to know their job. And by your question, Mike, apparently most of the candidates don't know their job either. I would say that the, any issue, and my president is here, that what comes before the city council is referred to a committee. The committee is there to study the issue that has been presented to them, not to turn around and originate issues. It should come before the city council. The city council president or the members would turn around and refer that issue to the regular standing committee. The committee will actually study the committee, and they will act on the issue. One thing that should happen, an issue should not go before a committee and turn around and reach the point where the committee will turn around and amend it. The vote should come before the committee on the issue, and every, whether it's two, three, or four votes, every vote should come back and be reported to the city council as to how the members of that committee voted on each and every issue, whether they approved it or disapproved it. Then it would be up to the members of the city council to move to amend the issue that has been presented to them. I've said it before, and I say it again, apparently, the city council, the way it's running, people are trying to act like them. I say that most of the city councillors don't know their job, and the candidates are even worse, because they're trying to do the same thing as the councillors who do not know their job. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pelletier.
Thank you. I'd like to think that I know my job. And right now, outstanding committees here in the city of Fall River, there's 117 issues, whether it be on finance, regulation, real estate, whatever you want. It's 117 right now. And depending on who chairs it, you know, if I got something that's very important, it's going to be done right away, I'll do it. You have the Aggregates School that wanted to, someone wanted to buy it, and I was sick, I got out of my hospital bed and went in. It was very, very important. And I asked the president if somebody else could run it. Basically, he said, "No, you don't have to run it." So I come in and done what I have to do. And all these committees, depending on who's the head of it, they will call the shots. We've got regulations that my colleague's next to me, so when she asks to call a meeting, she calls it. We go up and hash it out. So it all depends on the individual, when they call the meeting, but whoever's the head of it should try to dispose of anything that's in your committee as soon as it happens, really, because people are waiting for answers. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mrs. Pereira.
Well, I've got to tell you, I have some experience in handing out committee assignments. And the way I handed out committee assignments wasn't by who voted for me. I didn't promise anybody a specific committee for a vote, because I think that that's, that's the problem that people of Fall River, for Fall River are frustrated with. I put all the committees on my kitchen table with everybody's names. Who would fit best for each committee? At that time, I had Councilor Rego on Public Works and Transportation, because that's what he knows. I had Counselor Mitchell on ordinance, that met monthly, if not twice a month. Counselor Pelletier knows a lot about the real estate. You put people on committees that suit them, that they have a strength for, and that the job can get done. I now cheer regulations. Don't mind cheering regulations, it's a good job. It's the art of compromise between a business and a resident, whatever the issue is. When I get something to regulations, before the next council meeting, I have a meeting scheduled, because when a job is to be done, I do it. And I think the people of Fall River know me as a worker. Needs to be done, move and get it done. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rego.
Well, I chair the public safety currently. I just inherited it from one of the ex-councillors who resigned. In speaking to that, there's a lot of, a lot of situations, a lot of resolutions that come before the council, and when them resolutions come up, it generally gets referred to a committee. Depending on the severity of that, of that resolution, or whatever situation comes before us, whether it be the president or the mayor presents that to us, it needs to be acted upon, again, depending on the severity of the issue. I'll give you an example, the King Philip Mill. We know what's going on with the King Philip Mill. It's a hazard. It's, it's a detriment to the community, and we need to act. But when you don't have the finances, when you don't have results to give to the full body of the city council, to meet just to say you're going to meet and not getting nothing resolved, that's not the right way to go neither. You want to meet with substance, you want to meet with resolutions to the issue that is on that committee at that time. So to say that there are strengths and weaknesses, yeah, there are, but you know something? That can be a problem, but you need to be diverse, and you need to spread your wings and try your best at whatever committee that the president puts you on. And hopefully, we can address that better going into the future.
Thank you. Mr. Silva.
Yes, basically, I think the committees, you know, we should, should be set up, as Council Perro was saying, about, you know, people should be put at the head of committees that, you know, their talents and what their knowledge is based should be on those committees. Another thing, I think there should be more public input on certain issues, and that should be, you know, inviting, and especially for the youth of the city, as they had a youth prevention, youth violence prevention forum the other night, and a lot of the students were telling us that they, they don't feel like they're really involved, or that there's adults they can trust in the city, or, you know, there's issues that they want to speak on. I think they should be invited more to the committee meetings, just to get them more involved. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Cabaseras.
So, the issue with committees is, they're not very active. Some committees are very active, and some frankly aren't. And we have an issue where resolutions go to these committees, and nothing gets done with them. They'll sit there for months, sometimes longer, and these resolutions aren't even looked at. So I think it's important that our committees are held to a certain standard. Resolutions shouldn't sit on the table for four, five months. They should sit on the table for less than that, and they should be acted upon in some way, shape, or form. Now, if we have to table those issues in order to be able to come up with more information, then that's the appropriate thing to do. But they should at least be looked at regularly, those resolutions that are on the table. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Camara.
Thank you. As the current president and someone that passes out committee assignments, I've never promised anyone a committee assignment, and I don't ever remember anyone promising me a committee assignment. I've been on a council long enough, I've served on every committee. They all are crucial, they all get their due time in. Council Mike Mayoza is the chairman of the Environmental Affairs Committee. Someone tell me who is more qualified on the city council to be the chairman of the Environmental Affairs Committee than Council Mike Mayoza. I looked at all the councillors. At that time, we were closing a landfill, there were cover issues, there were a lot of meetings. These committees, as Counselor, as candidate-
Godet.
-Godet had said, get referred from what happens in the council meetings. I knew the landfill was closing, and we were going to have a lot of environmental issues, and I think Council Mayoza did a phenomenal job through those environmental issues in his committees when we were closing the landfill. Council Pelletier does a phenomenal job in the real estate committee. He's been there before, he's had experience, he knows what he's doing. Council Pelletier, Counselor Pereira does a phenomenal job with the Regulations Committee. She knows where to select, she sits down with people and works out problems and issues. I think she does a great job. Council Rego requested to be on Public Safety Committee when Counselor Correa stepped down. He was the environmental, Counselor Silva stepped down. He was the environmental committee, he called me up and says, "If you're going to fill that committee, give me public safety." I wasn't going to shift everything around, I made one change, gave Council Rego the committee he wanted. I think Council Correa, as the ordinance committee, does a phenomenal job. I think he's a bright, young, energetic person that knows what he's doing.
Thank you.
Did the best I could. I think they're well-placed. Thank you.
Our next question will be asked by Pamela Martin from FRG TV, and that question will go to candidate Linda Pereira. Pam?
Do you favor representation by ward, such as what we have in New Bedford, or here in Fall River, as is currently councillors at large?
To be honest with you, I don't think that that's my decision. I think that's a decision of the community. Years ago, in New Bedford, I had friends that are on the city council in New Bedford, and we talked about that, and how it worked, and how it didn't work. And in New Bedford, what I was told by one of the councillors, that was a longstanding councillor, that primarily that began because there were pockets and neighborhoods of ethnic groups, so to get representation, fair representation, from all ethnic groups, he felt that that worked for them. They also have more councillors than Fall River has. With the Charter Commission and the Charter Review question coming on the ballot-
and the Charter Review question coming on the ballot, that's an issue that people will be discussing, to see if they think it's beneficial, or it's not beneficial. I don't find it difficult, being a counselor at large, servicing people in any other part of the city, because at large, this is a small town. Fall River isn't really a big city. It has more of that small-town feeling. And people work with each other, no matter what section of the city they come from. So, I think that the Charter Review would be able to address that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rego.
Yes, I know New Bedford very well, and I'm very well aware, but they do, I believe, have three city councilors at large, and the rest are in districts. But that is a very good... a very good question, and that is going to be up to this hopeful Charter Review that Mike Mayoza has been heading off. Props to him a millionfold. And I think that is something that needs to be looked at. We think about our school system. That thought brings a thought from the school system to me, because we had neighborhood schools. Now, we have schools that are well-spread out throughout... in certain areas of the city. So, maybe the city councilor in each district can work a little bit harder and get to know the people in that district, and what their needs are for that particular area, and then share it with the full council and hopefully pass it off. I think it's a good... it's something to look at. I would be in favor of it myself, because I do believe that if you live in a certain neighborhood, you can get to know the residents and get to know the needs, their strengths, the weaknesses, and bring it to the full council, and get support from the other districts in order to pass something such as public safety, because every area of the city of Fall River is unique in itself. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Silva.
Basically, this issue, I've talked to many people, and some people seem to favor, you know, councils at large or ward. It's different opinion, and basically, it is something that's going to be in the Charter Review. If people decide that they'd like to have a few ward councilors, then that could be up, you know, to that committee. And if they decide that you want to keep it the way it is... So, it's basically, it's up to the city. Myself, I think the way it is right now, councils at large is fine. But if that's something that can be looked at when they do the Charter Review, then people want to change it, they can change it.
Thank you. Mr. Cabaseras.
I believe that this is a better question for the Charter Review Group and the people who are running for the Charter Commission. That being said, I'm in full support of Charter Review. It's been 81 years since we've had a full Charter Review, and it's vitally important. It's good government, and it's something that we need to do sooner rather than later. Now, I think tackling this issue may potentially be detrimental to what the Charter Revision... the Charter Review Group is trying to do, and what the Charter Commission will do. Reason being is, when the questions go on the ballot, you're either going to be able to vote for all of the changes that the Charter Commission suggests, or none. You can't pick and choose which issues you want to vote for. You either vote for all or none. So, as of right now, I'm in favor of putting regular Charter Reviews in the Charter, so that way, we never have to deal with the issue of going out and getting signatures again. I'm in favor of making our ordinances state compliant, and I'm also in favor of the ordinances that really don't mean much. I'm in favor of giving those ordinances a little more clarity. Anything above and beyond that, I'm concerned that they won't pass through the ballot process when the voters go out and vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Joseph Kamara.
I think that if you change the charter the way it is now, and you... and I am in favor of the Charter Review as well, and you take the system that New Bedford has, what you do is, for any particular neighborhood, you limit your choices. Right now, people can choose any resident of the city to pick anyone they want to represent them. They can call nine city councilors. Now, if you're in a neighborhood where you have a sibling or a relative that ran against the person that won that council seat, are you really going to reach out to that person? Is he really going to be someone that wants to take care of the pothole in front of your house or your street? And it creates a situation like it does when you have state rep races, where some people don't talk to each other, and families don't talk to each other, who live in the same district, because they run against each other for state rep. And if you have nine city councilors, and you don't particularly care for one or two, you still have seven other councilors that you can call to and get some services from. But if you have a city council that's in your district that you happen to run against, or someone else runs against, it's very difficult to reach out to that person, and you have infighting within particular neighborhoods. You don't have that now. So, people can vote for nine, or they can vote for one, or they can do whatever they want, but they have more choices. You have the entire city to choose from. And I think that's a benefit to them. And I think that all councilors are, like Counselor said before, they're very familiar with the city, and it's not a big city. It's easy, and I grew up in the south end of the city. I live in the north end of the city now. Do I care less about the area where I grew up and my relatives are in the south end? Do I do about the north end? No. None of us do. We all care about the city.
Thank you. Stephen Kamara.
I think your question's great, Pam. I'm a policy analyst and a political scientist by education, so this is the kind of question that I really love. And I would be very much against a ward system. I think ward system sort of creates a competition that's not always healthy. If one particular ward counselor decides that he wants to get something for his ward, and the other councilors want to get it for their ward, they may nix it, and it ends up not going anywhere. So, ward politics tends to be more corrupt and more destructive to what's good for the community as a whole. So, I like the idea of the entire citizenry voting for the members of the council. But I'd like to, and I've offered to some of the Charter Commission, I do encourage people to support the Charter Commission, because we can look at these kinds of issues. What I would like to see is explore the possibility of councilors coming from wards. So, you get a counselor from Ward One that has to collect his or her signatures from Ward One, but then gets elected by the entire city. That way, you assure nine councilors, each from a ward, but beholding to the entire city in order to get elected. It's sort of a nice hybrid that brings together the interest of the wards and the people to identify a counselor from their ward, but yet, all of the councilors have to work for the good of the entire city. So, I think it's a good hybrid that hopefully the Charter Review will review.
Thank you. Mr. Kamenidi.
This question kind of goes to the heart of the Charter Review, and of course, I'm for the Charter Review. I've supported it over the years, and I ask people to vote for the Charter Review. And that's all it is. It's a review. It's not a revision. A lot of people have probably called it that over the years. But what we're doing is, we're looking at the charter, and we're seeing what might work for Fall River, what might not work for Fall River. The difference between a ward system and an at-large system like we have, I've lived under both. They both have their strengths. They both have their weaknesses. And you can't really choose between one or another based on, you know, based on what you want, because there's... In a ward system, like my colleague Kamara just said, you could have infighting. You can have fighting between factions. In our system now, it's at least more fair. I mean, there's other things I'd like to see happen, perhaps maybe a four-year term for the mayor, because the mayor is always running for office, doesn't seem to have any time to get anything unpopular done. It'd be nice to have him be able to do something unpopular, get reelected later. That's the type of thing I'd actually like to see.
Thank you. Mr. Godet.
Thank you, Pam. I guess your question has moved from whether councilors have, or whether we're going to get involved in a Charter Commission. I am very happy with the system that we have now. I was first elected 50 years ago, and I have watched the city councilors for the past 50 years, and they seem to be working for all the people, not a particular group. I'd ask the question, what would happen if I was elected from Ward One, and I moved into Ward Nine? Who would fill the vacancy? What would happen then? Would you have no counselor from Ward One and two councilors from Ward Nine? If I was ... have to go out and look for an employee that I wanted to hire, I wouldn't turn around and say, "I have to hire one from Ward One, one from Ward Two." I would look for the best employee that's best suited to do the job. And that goes the same way with the city council. The best city counselor is suited to do the job. People are talking Charter Review. I have read the charter. I have talked to people who are reviewing it, who have never seen the charter. They have no idea. I studied the charter. I studied politics. We made changes. The city clerk used to be appointed by the city councilors. They turned around, and Mayor Correa, not this one, but Mayor Correa turned around and did it. We turned around, and we had a four-year term for mayor. We had a two-year term. We've made changes to the charter, and I have studied the charter. And really, they might review it, but I don't see anything big and important coming out of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pelletier.
Thank you. I love the system just the way it is. I don't mind working for the people of the south end, the north end, the Flint, anyplace. You know, I would get a call on a certain issue, and one of my colleagues may get a call on the same issue, and one of my other colleagues may get a call on the same issue. Now, we have three individuals working for that individual, wherever it may be. I like serving everybody in the city of Fall River, north end, like I said, anywhere. And another thing, if we go by wards, you're adding four more individuals. I think New Bedford has 13 of them. So, now, you've got four more on a council, whether they're councilors, award councilors. They have a say and want a say in the process of the city business. And so, it's going to cost you another 70, 80,000 for them as well. And I just think it should be left just the way it is. And just fast, you mentioned about the Charter Review, and you have to vote the whole thing on changes. Well, let me tell you something. I don't think that's right. If you want to just change one thing, all well and good, but don't blanket the whole thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Alan Zarek from WSAR Radio will be asking our next question, and the candidate to answer that question first will be Richard Cabaseras. Alan?
If you were to encounter a decision-maker from a Fortune 500 company, and they asked you about Fall River and thought about perhaps locating a business here, what would your pitch be? What would you tell them?
Thank you for your question. It's an important question, and I think it's one that we have to address more so, because as another person on the panel said, we have an image issue. So, when I met that Fortune 500 company person, I would say simply, "Come to Fall River. We have a third of the overhead that you're going to find in Boston, Providence. We're centrally located. We have waterfront property that you can put your corporate offices on, and our tax rate is far cheaper than majority of the places that you're going to be looking to locate your company. We have a workforce who's ready to work, who's trainable, and you can come to our city and go through the process of opening your business and making sure that Fall River becomes your new home. Additionally, your employees who want to move have great amenities in Fall River that are improving year over year, and they have low cost in order to be able to live in those places." Thank you for your question. Joseph Kamara.
Thank you. It's an excellent question. I don't know if the company is a Fortune 500 company or not, but I have had discussions with the president of a company called Granite Block. They came to the city. They're the largest data-storing facility... storage facility in all of New England. They're right down in the heart of the city on Bedford Street, and they came to Fall River from Pembroke. They moved their headquarters here because of all the wonderful things that this city has to offer. The electricity rates are lower than Boston and surrounding areas. The real estate is lower. The proximity to different places is lower. The grid from Provincetown to Boston to Upper Cape goes right through the heart of Fall River, the grid. He's in a building that is a granite building that he can't even insure, because the insurance company won't pay to replace that building, because it's worth... you just can't come up with that kind of money to replace that building. But it's in the building because he knows it's sound and secure, and nothing's going to happen to it. He put in a sprinkler system. He invested millions of dollars. And you know why he came to Fall River? Because within 30 miles of Fall River, within 30-mile radius, you have so many colleges and universities that are graduating hundreds and thousands of engineers, mathematicians, educators, people who live in the surrounding areas. We talk about education, and people aren't educated in this community. Well, let me tell you. Roger Williams, Stonehill, Bryan University, Bryant, Brown University, Providence College, UMass Dartmouth, Savory Regina. I can go on and on about all of the children.
Thank you.
And I'll pick right up...
You get the message.
I'll pick right up where this younger Mr. Kamara just left off. We each need to be advocates for our city, and that includes every person that's in the public. And I think all of us should be advocating for that advancement. We're here because we love Fall River, and that's something that some say is trite. But we're not here... we have choices, but we've chosen to be here. Fall River is greatly located on the coast, northeast coast, the center of America's population center, really. Also, in the center of, as was mentioned, the educational center of the world, the medical center of the world, the recreational center of the world. Within 25 miles of our city are all the great sights that anyone could ever want to see, from Plymouth Rock to Newport to Cape Cod, within 50 miles to Boston, to points north and south, to skiing, water skiing. I mean, there's just so much that's rich about our region. And I tell a story often about a waitress in the downtown area who had a gentleman sitting, could have been a Fortune 500 person. She was having... he was having breakfast, and she said, "Why would you have breakfast in Fall River?" Giving a sense of, "Why do you even want to be here?" Every person should be going through a hospitality training that comes in contact with the public, so that the response is, "Welcome to Fall River. Have you been to our historical society? Have you seen the great waterfront we have? Have you enjoyed our resources of close proximity to the ocean?" This is what we should be talking about with every person that we meet, treating everyone as a value.
Thank you. Mr. Kamenidi.
So, this is an excellent question, because it's something that's actually happened to me. Not a Fortune 500 company, but a company that I used to work for has actually started to move into the city. Will be moving into November, down on the waterfront at Jerry Remy's. And the reason they're moving there is because of the type of situation that we have. We have a beautiful mill structure there. That's what they wanted. They wanted a cool mill structure. There's living quarters over it, rental units for people that are, you know, people that are working there. It's... The company is a... it's a web design and development company, so it's young, cool people. They're into that sort of thing. They want to live in there. And the amenities that we have in the city, the waterfront, the eating establishments, they're all the types of things that this company is looking for. They weren't even necessarily looking for a cheaper place to be, but they were looking for the type of thing that Fall River has to offer, which is the nice boardwalk that we have down in that area, the waterfront view, all that sort of thing, things that you don't have in every other location in the state, or even Rhode Island. And one of the things that brought them to the area in the first place, because they were in Taunton, is the location. They're nearby all of the Providence and Boston universities, and that drew people in for a long time. But now, they're moving further closer to us because... just basically because of what we have here to offer.
Thank you. Mr. Godet.
I think Fall River is a wonderful place to live, a great place to live. If I was a Fortune 500 company, I'd look around. I really don't leave the city of Fall River for any particular reason. A Fortune 500 company that came, and I have to repeat what everybody says, we have everything that a person wants at Fall River. A Fortune 500 company would actually attract more people into the city. Bring people in here who wanted to work, instead of people who thinking that we owe them a living. We have to bring the workers in here. The Fortune 500 club, anybody who had any sense that had a job would love to live in Fall River. We have everything. We have the colleges. We have the hospitals. We have the schools. We have the water. Fall River has everything that a person should want to give them a good life. And I think if a Fortune 500 company was coming here, they would attract a different type person to come into the community, and that way, they could grow and the city could grow. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pelletier.
Thank you. I think, you know, it's tough to get Fortune 500 to even recognize Fall River, and I don't know how we go about attracting them people. "Hey, come to Fall River. We got something special for you guys, waterfront, any place in the area, and be there 20 to a half hour." But now that we have Amazon, I think they... that could be a spin-off later on, when other companies, "Wow, Amazon located there, a million square feet," and maybe that's the beginning, and somebody else will notice what's going on at Fall River, and they may just come down, maybe have a cup of tea with Mr. Pelletier, and I could tell them just what to expect. Come on down. We'll embrace you. More jobs. That's what we need. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Pereira.
I think that a lot of what has been said certainly reflects the community of Fall River. I think that beyond that, I would also want them to go to the business park, go to the industrial park, and speak to business owners in the industrial park who are expanding, who can vouch for the workforce of our community. And I think to get a Fortune 500 company, I think that they would look at the educational system of Fall River, if families were going to be moving in. So, I think to show them that the Education Department in Desi has said that our schools are gaining and making improvement. I think those are some of the positive things. Everything else that people said, I don't need to repeat, but just talks to the positives and what Fall River does have to offer. Sometimes, I think we, as Fall Riverites, become our own worst enemy. We're afraid to tout what we have, and I think those days need to change. Again, it comes back to the Again, it comes back to the image of what we have, how good we are, and what we have to offer. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rigo.
Yes, that is a very good question. Fortune 500 companies are very hard to come by these days because there are a lot of the places in the United States that are much cheaper than the city of Fall River. But with that said, there is, we have such a great community in the city of Fall River, and we have a lot to offer. If a Fortune 500 company was to ever come up to me and approach me, first of all, it would have to be in strict confidence. I would never divulge who I would be talking to because they don't like that right off the bat. And I think that's what almost happened with the Amazon deal. It almost failed. But nevertheless, in talking to these individuals or individual, I would show him exactly what it is that we need to offer, what kind of a workforce he can get, such as my colleagues have stated. Everything that they have stated is spot on. You can flourish them or edit them, but again, you need to inform them of what we can do for them in terms of tax breaks because that's what Fortune 500 companies look for when they come into a community. They want an incentive to come here. And that is very, very important to make sure that we do everything to give them what they want for a good price to generate jobs. And that's exactly what I, my approach would be. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Silva.
Basically, answering last is a lot of things I could repeat. Obviously, the location of the city. We have a low commercial tax rate. We have a workforce that's ready, you know, to go to work. There's a lot of amenities here, good restaurants, there's affordable housing. You know, depending on the business, I'd like to take the opportunity to speak to small businesses. There's a lot of small businesses that we don't have in Fall River that people leave the city every day to go to, such as, you know, movie theaters. Well, Home Depot's a larger company, but that's something people leave the city for. It's a lumberyard. You can't even get a, you know, you get, there's one place to get a two-by-four in Fall River, Baldock's Lumber. And, you know, other than that, it's like the small businesses, we need to attract them to the city. And I think there's a lot of, there's a great opportunity that we have. We're on the border of Rhode Island, and Rhode Island is in a financial mess, you know, it seems like all the time. And I think we could attract those companies from out the state next door and get them to come in. So, I mean, it's going to be a lot of what everybody's saying. We know the assets, it's just about promoting it and using it to our advantage and opening up the city to new people that want to come in. So basically, I think we have a lot to offer, but we need to promote that more. Thank you.
Thank you. Don Amato will ask the next question to our candidates, and the question will be first asked to Jason Kamenidi.
First, I have to say that, as I'm listening, you all seem to be on the same page, knowing what the issues are just across the board. Tell us, what makes you the best city councillor? What are your strengths? But also, what are your weaknesses? What can you honestly tell the public, hey, you know, this is my strength, but this is a weakness I have?
Well, strengths are probably easier than weaknesses because I don't sit around thinking about my weaknesses too much. But, so, for strengths, I have a management background. I've worked for companies over the years as a management, managing budgets, invoicing, doing contracts, that sort of thing. I've also been following city politics for a very long time, not just in Fall River, but everywhere else that I've been, been a part of. Everywhere I've lived, I've always followed city politics. So I've been interested in that, and that's been a part of my life. As for weaknesses, I mean, I certainly would have some parliamentarian issues to learn. I haven't been on the council, so I don't know a lot about the parliamentarian procedures, but I could certainly learn that over time. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Goddard.
That's pretty hard because I am an egotist. And I don't look for weaknesses. However, I'd say that one of the strengths that I have is that I am an individual. I'm parochial. I'm a politician, and I'm able to work with anyone, whether it be a mayor or a city councillor, but I do partner with no one. I'm a rubber stamp for no one. I stand as an individual, and whatever happens, I think that we have to start at the top. We have to create our own future. We have to create our own future by starting with what's going on in the city now. I have said that I want to see the city council sit down and negotiate each and every contract that we have with the municipal employees. I'm looking at the fact that people are not aware, maybe six or seven of the city councillors here would be in line for a $24,000 health insurance that the taxpayers are paying for. You get four of them, that's $100,000. I say that probably one of my strengths is that I look for nothing from the city council. I'm not looking for another job. I'm not looking to provide. I'm looking for one term. And with that one term, I am going to bring issues before the city council, and they have to take a stand. They have to stand up and do what's best for the community and stop worrying about the self-interest groups that are running our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pelletier.
Thank you. I think part of me is a personality that no matter where I go, I'll talk to anybody, give them a compliment. How are you today? How's the kids? No matter where I go. So that's good. But constituent service, I do very, very well because I am sort of retired, and you can call me up. I get my cellphone. You call me up, and if I can be there in ten minutes, I will be. And I tell them, I'll be there in ten minutes. I'll be there in five. You're coming right down right now? Absolutely. I'll be right there, and I try to take care, whatever I can take care of. My weakness, well, you know, during the week, you know, I may be a councillor, but I don't have to dress up like a councillor all the time. I'm in my dungarees, I got cutoffs, I got this. I drive my ratty truck down the road, they all know me. And that's me. That's part of my personality. But it is a weakness because you're not properly dressed. But that's my normal routine, normal clothes. But always try to help the people. Constituent service. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Pereira.
I think that part of my strength comes from my family background. My parents were always involved in community. I can go back to the campaign days of Nick Mitchell, of Driscoll, Roland Damaris. I think to have history in Fall River, I can tell you that I picketed against building a city hall over a highway. I fought over not closing an airport. Sometimes those things don't happen. I was vice president of fair share to make sure that taxes didn't go up more than two and a half percent. So I advocated. I think the biggest strength is to have it here, to have it in your heart, to want our city to be better. And a weakness I have, I get so darn frustrated with the wheels of government and how slow things work. That is a weakness of mine that I, I really need to just relax. It will happen, even though inside, it kills me. Thank you.
Mr. Rigo.
Thank you, all. My strengths of being a two-term councillor, four years, is accountability. I have been, I consider that I have been very, very forthcoming and holding the administration accountable. I'm not going to get into what I have done to hold the administration accountable because I wouldn't want to offend anybody. But that is the number-one strength that I have, is to hold the administration accountable because that's what the people elected me to do, to be their voice, to be their person of contact that when they see spending that is unaccountable for, to ask the hard questions, stand up, and do what's right for the community. So that's a big strength of mine. My weakness is my passion. Sometimes I can get a little too passionate, and people misunderstand that as whatever it is, as being mad or being arrogant. That's not me. I've got a big heart. I do what's right, and my passion is my weakness. And with that, that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Silva.
Thank you. As far as strengths go, I'm a business owner. I've owned my own business for seventeen years. I'm a homeowner. I know what it's like to pay taxes and water fees and water meter fees and all that stuff. So I know how it is for the average person in Fall River. I don't owe anyone in this city anything for doing, running in this campaign. I've not taken one donation from anyone, so no one's in my pocket. I'm honest. I will represent the people and not an agenda or any other politician's agenda, no matter who the mayor is. I know that some people think that, depending on who the mayor is, that that's who they're going to support. But either way, I'm thoughtful about the people, and I'm not afraid to get my hands dirty. And as far as weaknesses go, I would basically just say that I'm human. I get tired, and I don't have, we all have the same amount of time, and there's a lot of things I wish I could do more, but I do what I can, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kabiseras.
So I think in order to be a good leader, you have to have a good understanding of what your strengths and your weaknesses are. As a combat veteran, as a former firefighter, and as a financial advisor, I've had to lead by example for many years. I believe my leadership ability is something that's definitely a strength, the ability to work as a team, not only just to support my strengths, but also to supplement my weaknesses. So for instance, if I have, one of my weaknesses is construction, road construction, building construction. But I have hopefully future councillors who I'll be working with, people like councillor Rigo, who has a very good grasp on something like that. And I'd gladly work with him in order to have more information. Another weakness that I have is the ability to, I don't have a good grasp on public housing. So I could talk to somebody like councillor Long or councillor Pelletier, or even reach out to the head of Fall River Housing Authority in order to be able to get some of the answers that I need there. Back to my strengths, I believe I have the ability to dive into the budget probably better than most. I understand economic development, and I've written about economic development. And finally, I have the ability to remain as impartial, impartial through everything. And in the event that I'm personally attached to something, I'll gladly say, hey, you know what? I can't vote on this. But impartiality is something that's important to me, and I want to make sure all the votes that I make are for the best benefit of the city of Fall River.
Thank you. Justice Kamara.
Thank you. I also think that my leadership qualities are my strengths. Back in high school, I was president of the Spanish club, chosen by my peers. I was captain of the basketball team, again, chosen by the coach and my teammates. As council president, I was chosen by my colleagues. So I think that's one of my strengths. I also think that one of my strengths is that I'm extremely fair to everyone, and I listen to people. Those are very important. As a good leader, you need to listen and be fair to everyone. You just can't pick and choose and play favorites. It really doesn't work, trust me. And I think that one of my strengths also is, I research the issues, I look at what's going on, I try to solve the problems. And I've played sports my entire life. I know what it's like to be on a team and work with other people to get things accomplished, and that's what I do. I try to bring all of those things together so that we can get to the bottom line and work together with other people to win and get the ultimate goal accomplished. I just want to say that probably one of my weaknesses is I take things personal sometimes too much. And when people criticize this community and they badmouth the city, I take it personal, and that really bothers me. Sometimes I have to learn not to do that, but it's something that I'm going to try to control more. And the only other thing I want to say, with Mr. Goddard talking about, you know, the $24,000 head pensions, I've been on the city council for quite some time, never taken a dollar from the city's health plan, never been on it, never taken a cellphone. I've gone to Washington to testify against LNG. I paid my own way. I've gone to Boston to testify for doing things, paid my own way.
Thank you. Stephen Kamara.
Well, I'll get over the shortcoming first. You know, I tend to do things solo, on my own, and sometimes that's not the best thing. You need a team to get things done. And sometimes I don't look for that coalition and then get it done. And I'll go back to my very first probably mistake. Back when I was a college student, I saw the potential of what the Drifty Theater could have been for our downtown. This was many, many decades ago. And I went to the good nuns at Sacred Heart's Academy, I think Linda's alma mater, and they helped me print out petitions, and I tried to get the petitions filled out with a few friends and, because I knew that that was such a valuable thing. But I look back and think, what a wonderful thing it would have been if I had a coalition that would have said, the Drifty Theater needs to be kept as a part of Fall River's future. Strengths, I join with those who have talked about leadership. I was a proud Drifty graduate, class president of the largest class to ever graduate from the high school. I did exactly what I was told to do when I graduated from high school. I went on and got my education in government from the University of Massachusetts and my master's in urban affairs and policy analysis. I think I bring to the table the kind of perspective that's so important in making decisions because I make decisions based on professionally what's best for our community. And I too am an independent guy who stands alone in terms of not being tied to any particular controlled special interest.
Thank you. We don't quite have time for a full round of questions, but what I'd like to do is have one more question be asked by Michael Holzman. But what we'll do is we'll have the candidates have only one minute to respond. This will be the final question before the closing. So Michael Holzman will ask the question. One-minute responses. And the candidate who will answer it first will be Dan Rigo. Michael?
The Sutter administration this week confirmed receipt of a letter from the Massachusetts Inspector General's office requesting documentation on fund spend at Government Center for replacement of approximately 22 windows and for renovations on the mayor's office floor in 2013. What do you believe went wrong with that situation? And could the city council have played an intervening role to make sure the funds were used properly?
Mr. Rigo, one minute.
Well, it's a good, very good question because I was a big part of that. As a matter of fact, I was the one that walked upstairs and started seeing all the construction going on, and I'm the one who asked the hard questions. And I'm also part of the one that went to the inspector general's office, and I'm part of the one that went to the attorney general's office and made sure that that type of corruption, and that's exactly what happened, was to be exposed and people needed to be accounted for. So I'm very proud to say that goes along with the accountability that people have hired me for, have voted me for. And I'm going to keep on doing that, and I want to do that. And I am glad that the inspector general is, in fact, doing its due diligence. It's long overdue. People on the whole entire sixth floor who witnessed all that construction going on need to be held accountable.
Thank you. Mr. Silva.
Basically, what happened on the sixth floor was obviously money misappropriation of funds, money being misspent. There was a lot of corrupt activity. There's no doubt about it. The contractor that installed the windows owes the city almost a million dollars in taxes, and I wonder how that would even happen, that someone would accrue that, you know, that large of a tax bill to the city and why they would be left to, you know, not have to pay that bill like the rest of us. So obviously, it's taken a while, and the inspector general's looking into it, but there's people that are in city government now that are obviously were aware of what the situation, what was going on at that time. So I mean, if you're reaching out to the higher authority and they're dragging their feet, I mean, basically, you just have to wait and the investigation's done. But there was obviously, you know, some illegal activity going on in that whole situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kabiseras.
So with the 22 windows that were placed in City Hall, there are definitely procurement laws that were broken. I think the first thing that I would have done, had I been in the situation and in the seat at that point in time, is I would have asked the administration exactly what was going on, found out exactly why 22 windows were being put in without proper procurement procedure. Then, in the event that they don't answer me properly or they're avoiding the question, then, as the councillors over there did, I would approach the attorney general and the inspector general and simply say, hey, this is what happened. I think you should look into it. Now, the key part is, after I approached them, I think it's important to continue to follow up, continue to make phone calls in order to make sure that they're doing their due diligence and making sure that the people of Fall River aren't being slighted. Thank you.
Thank you. Joseph Kamara.
Well, the windows were installed in 2013. No one knew about what happened until in the middle of 2014. And if it weren't for a $50,000 check that the subcontractor tried to cash, because he's the one that is taking the brunt on this, this man went out and rented equipment, installed the windows. equipment, installed the windows. The person that owes the city money didn't do the installation. It was a subcontractor that tried to collect his money. And then when the police department saw that he bounced a check, and it's a felony offense to bounce a check, that amount of money, they went to see if the monies for that check was in the account. When they found out it wasn't, they went to see why not. The man claimed that he didn't get paid from the city. It's a total travesty. It's a shame. And had that check cashed, they actually would have got away with doing what they did, and that's not right. It's wrong, and I'm glad there's an investigation going on, and people need to be held accountable. Everyone. Shame on them.
Mr. Stephen Camara.
I would agree that shame is probably the word that's most appropriate as it relates to this whole situation. And to answer your question specifically, should the city council have played a role? It certainly should have played a role. There were nine members of the council that were there at the time when those windows were installed. Going to the question of committee structure, there surely should have been a committee that was investigating that right from the beginning, right from the get-go. I don't think any council committee has yet to address this issue, and that should be done. So, the people of Fall River are disgusted. They're angry because there has not been accountability. There has been a great injustice to the subcontractor who hasn't been paid. And all in all, the people of Fall River, I think, want to see the kind of change that I think many of the new candidates are offering, the kind of change that will create greater accountability and greater citizen input into the process of governing. And I think this is a good thing.
Thank you. Mr. Caminiti.
I'm really glad to see that this is moving along. Would I have liked to see the window issue move along faster? Yes, but the wheels of these types of things move slowly. That's just how it is. But what I'm concerned with is what else is going on under our noses that we don't know about. You know, this involves a lot of high-level people in our government. There's a lot of mistrust now in our government because of this situation. So, I think if we can get to the bottom of what happened, the bottom of what was gonna happen, and I think we all know what happened, somebody's girlfriend wanted new windows. I mean, that's the bottom line. But if we get to the bottom of it, we figure out exactly what was going on, we get everybody taken care of that was part of it, I think that the people can then trust the government again, and we'll be back on track.
Thank you. Mr. Gardett.
Actually, I think the windows should have been a no issue. I think the city councilors created this because they were fighting Mayor Flanagan. Anything the mayor tried to do, they tried to find something wrong with it. And they created the problem. Did not cost the city of Fall River anything at all. There was no money that the city had to pay. There's no money that anyone's looking for from the city. This was a business deal between two private contractors, not between the city of Fall River and a contractor. The city councilors created the problem. They have constantly turned around and created problems which make our city look bad. I blame the city councilors for the problem that we're in now, because the actions they took, there was four of them. I want to get rid of them. I hope they do go. But these four city councilors are the ones that created so many problems because they were so anxious. They wanted to be mini-mayors. They wanted to fight Mayor Flanagan and try to embarrass him, and all they did was embarrass themselves and the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pelletier.
I don't know if we get blamed for this. I'm not sure who gets the blame, but I'll tell you, there are a lot of bigger people that looked into the situation than the councilors. And I had mentioned on the floor that you want the answer, to get the answer for this, and the key to the whole thing was Mo Reposa. That's the guy to see. So, all this stuff is going on, the AG Attorney General, that's the guy to see. He knows the answers. He's not talking. That's it. So, where are we going now? Whatever they want to do, are you.
Thank you. Mrs. Pereira.
Now, I want to tell you that this is not the role of the city council, because this is a criminal matter. It's a criminal matter. And if I'm gonna be taking the blame that it was my fault that windows got put up there, I will take the blame. And the blame that I will take is that I was doing my job to make sure that taxpayers' money was being spent wisely. I do do investigations for the Bristol County District Attorney's Office. And to do this, you needed to have a criminal investigation. Not one of the nine councilors is a criminal investigator. I did write to the attorney general and to the inspector general prior to it coming out in the Herald News, because I asked questions, I didn't get the right answer, and I asked those questions. And, you know, when you think about, oh, they went up and they're for free, well, that's great. Who inspected them? Because I'd hate like heck to see one of those windows fall out and hurt somebody. There's a process that needs to be followed. And if you want me to take the blame for defending Fall River residents, I'll take it.
Thank you. That concludes our questions. Time now for our two-minute closing statements. There were three candidates tonight who did not answer a question first during the questioning stage. So, either Mr. Gardett, Mr. Pelletier, or Mr. Silva will be asked first to give their closing statement first. And presenting the closing statement first will be Mr. Gardett. You have two minutes.
Thank you. I have a campaign that I'd like to be the voice of the residents. Everyone seems to have a voice with the city councilors, whether it be a union, whether it be a club, whether it be an organization. But there's really no one who is actually speaking for the residents. And I say we have to create our own future. We have to start with the city council. We have to stop making cuts and saving money where it is. As I said before, I don't believe any part-time city councillor, school committee man, attorney for the mayor should be getting full-time benefits. I don't think they should get in that $24,000 worth of insurance. It's a great job. $16,000 for salary, $24,000, $40,000. You go in there two years, you've got $80,000. Four years, $160,000 for a part-time job. It's too much money. You've got to start with your own, and you've got to cut where you have to. And I intend to bring the city councilors before the people for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pelletier, two minutes.
Thank you. You know, sometimes we have the lack of vision in Fall River. I am tired of hearing we cannot be done in Fall River, when the fact is that negativity stops us from trying different things. We, as a city, have to provide our residents with the service they deserve, from street service to the school department, that we should fund 100%. We should also be full complementary to police and fire personnel for our residents and to provide the professional service that they deserve. So, I'm asking you tonight to please give me a vote, November 3rd. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Pereira, two minutes.
First of all, I want to thank FRC Media, the panelists, the candidates here, and the audience at home. I may not agree with all the candidates' position on issues, but I do admire their willingness to get involved in the election process, because I do know firsthand that it's not easy to stand up or speak out or fight for what you believe in. So, I do commend city council candidates for participating in this forum. As your city councillor, I've worked hard to make a positive difference in Fall River, for your family and mine. But in the reality, a city councillor, you are one of nine votes, and getting the majority of nine votes is not always an easy task. But I've been very successful in earning the majority of my colleagues' support on important issues, not just because I fight or speak loudly, which I do. It's because I listen to my colleagues and I respect their opinion. I have tried to get the council to vote on department head contracts, vendor contracts, service contracts. I requested the city collector split maintenance bills into two smaller payments instead of one big payment. I asked department heads to purchase equipment instead of renting equipment for a long period of time. I requested the school department receive the balance of the school funding we owe them. I asked that unspent bond monies would be put back into the city budget. I requested the dedicated funds to be used to hire a minimum of five new police officers. Right now, I'm working on an initiative to obtain federal military equipment, surplus material that the city can get for free. I'm working on reclaiming the Salto Atapa Pond. And I've done that with the help of our city planner, conservation, community development, and the governor's office and state officials. I am only one voice and one vote on the council, but with your support and your vote on election day, I'll continue to work hard and do everything I can to improve Fall River's quality of life. Thank you, and God bless.
Thank you. Mr. Rigo.
Well, thank you very much for our Fall River media, and also the panelists for being here, and everybody who is sitting here today. First of all, I just want to like to say thank you for letting me serve you, the people of the city of Fall River, and being a strong voice for you on the city council. I spoke earlier about accountability. That is one thing I can promise you, the voters, that I am gonna hold whoever it is up on that sixth floor accountable for the actions that are taken. I want to ask each and every one of you to please consider voting for the charter review. That's very important. Hopefully, we can sway a little bit of the influence to strengthen our city council with a much higher voice in city government. I'd also like to mention that we are in struggling times, but the future looks bright ahead. We have developments coming through, such as Amazon. We have waterfront that's being developed. There are great things happening in the city of Fall River. So, in order for us to prosper, we need to stay focused, and we need to show other communities that we can be better and we can do it. Lastly, I just want to ask, first and foremost, for one of your nine votes on the city council. I believe that I have done my due diligence. I have held the administration accountable, such as each and every one of you would do at home. And I am very proud to sit here today and to tell you that I did hold the past administration accountable, and I am very proud that I did ask a corrupt mayor to resign, and I am not afraid to do that way before the recall even happened. That is what you elected me to do, and that's what I'm gonna keep doing. I respectfully ask for your vote on November 3rd. Thank you very much, and God bless.
Thank you. Mr. Silva.
Thank you. Thank you to FRC, candidates that are here, and the panel. I'm just asking for your vote on November 3rd. I think there's a lot of people in the city that are looking for change, and if you want change, you can definitely count that if you voted for me. As I said earlier, I've taken no donations. No one's in my pocket. I don't represent anyone's agenda. I just want to represent the people, the average Fall River resident. I vowed to, in my first term, not vote against any raises in taxes, new fees, raises in fees, any such thing. I do have a lot of ideas and plans that I'd like to see for the city, but as I'd only be one voice on the city council, I'd have to work with the others to accomplish some of those goals and the administration, obviously. So, on November 3rd, I think you have a clear choice. We've gone over all the issues the last few months, you know, year and a half, and I think that people, if you want, look for a new voice on the council that's gonna represent the average person. You can vote for me on November 3rd. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cabisseris.
Thank you, Keith, Donna, Michael, Pamela, Alan. The people here who are running for office, thank you, FRC Media. Thank you, FRG TV. And most of all, thank you, everybody at home watching this today, especially those that came out and voted on September 22nd for your strong show of support. I believe our city has the potential to compete with any other city in New England. In order to reach that potential, we need, as Councilor Pelletier said, a vision. I've worked hard to set the example in order to be able to open the discussion about long-term growth and create a vision. It's easy to take a look at the budget and point at something and say, "We should cut this," even if it's something that we shouldn't cut. It's a lot harder to generate additional revenue using the assets that we currently have in order to be able to grow our city and grow revenue without burdening the taxpayer. My long-term plan makes multiple suggestions in order to be able to grow revenue using the assets that we currently have, and you can find that plan at electrichc.com. My experience as a combat veteran, as a former firefighter, and a financial advisor will give you somebody who has selflessly served for years. As a councillor, I would be able to lead by example, promote teamwork among the council, and I would be able to dive into the budget better than most. I ask that you exercise the freedom that people fight for every day by getting out and voting on November 3rd. Vote for the people that best represent you and your beliefs. I hope that I happen to be one of those people, and I'm fortunate enough to serve as your next city councillor. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Joseph Camara.
Thank you. I also want to thank FRC Media. I want to thank you, Keith. I want to thank the panel as well, as well as all of the candidates running for office, and all of the people home, and people that have supported each and every one of us. I want to thank you very much for paying attention to this very important debate. I'm a lifelong resident of the city of Fall River. My wife, Lila, and I have raised three children in this school system, three children in this city. Two of them have gone through the Fall River Public School System, and one that's currently a sophomore in high school. I care a great deal about the city. And when I talk about people, long-term planning, and long-term vision, and council should have their plan in place and should do things, I think that's pretty much what I've done through all my tenure on the council. I think that we built 10 new schools in this city at 90% reimbursement, because we saw the need. We saw the 100-year-old buildings. We saw the school buildings with no computer equipment whatsoever. Any computer equipment in these schools were pretty much a gift from a company or something had them, and the children had to share computer rooms instead of having computers in their classrooms. We took advantage of that state program, and we built 10 new schools, helping to help our education system. We saw the need to expand our industrial space. We created Commerce Park that is 100% occupied, provides thousands of employment to our residents, millions of dollars in tax revenues. We saw the need to create an additional park, the Biopark, and now Amazon's coming to the Biopark. We saw the need to reline our water mains. When people come into the council chambers years ago with jars of dirty water, filthy, dirty water, they couldn't drink it, and they couldn't wash their clothes with it. We addressed that issue. We've been building the infrastructure in this community. You see what's going on in the waterfront, and that's just right now. But we've been doing that type of thing all along, fixing our streets, fixing our cities, fixing the potholes, doing all of the infrastructure things that you need to put in place to make businesses want to come in here. So, all of the things that people say we should be doing, we have been doing it. We're gonna continue to do it. And on November 3rd, I respectfully ask for one of your nine votes to the city council. Thank you.
Stephen Camara.
Thank you. As an urban policy analyst, I recognize that taxpayers and rent payers are the people whose needs and whose ability to pay should be our top priority. Democracy demands participation, and I will advocate for expanded citizen input into the governing process, remembering that councilors are public servants. My priorities: clean streets and safe streets, improved sidewalks, streets, parks, water and sewer lines, maintenance of our buildings, monuments, other public facilities, and certainly our open space. Every neighborhood child, every neighborhood child and adult must be safe. I work with and for better neighborhoods, and I co-founded two neighborhood associations. I am an unwavering advocate of the needs of the people, and together we get things done. Historic preservation and the arts are key to economic development. I initiated the drive to save the Drifty Theater, Fall River's most majestic downtown theater, and that was a part of a logic commitment to community preservation. We have no future without celebrating, respecting, and preserving our past. Our history and potential are equal to any other city in Massachusetts. Fall River should be New England's next great city. I ask for your vote to return me, Stephen Camara, to the city council. As a former council president, councillor, and school committee member, I am ready to work for you. I have been in business and learned early in life that honesty and good service produce success. My family owned the Robeson Market, and from them I learned that you give a good product and honest service, people will come to support you. We deserve better government, and I commit to you to represent you honestly and effectively. Respectfully, I, Stephen Camara, ask for your vote on election day, Tuesday, November 3rd. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Caminiti.
I'd like to thank FRC Media, the panelists, my colleagues, and everyone at home as well. I've been working and following government for a very long time. As soon as I moved to the city, I started following government here. So, I've been involved a long time in this process. In fact, I've been following the budget for as long as I can remember, and for budget processes for as long as I can remember, going back to my father's business years ago. So, I'm definitely gonna be able to jump into the budget, because I already follow our budget. In fact, this year I released www.fallrivervisualbudget.org, which was prompted by the Herald News's article on the subject for Somerset, saving the city $3,000, by the way. I'm also working with Senator Roderick's on downtown, trying to get sales tax incentives for one-of-a-kind artwork being bought and sold downtown, which will hopefully get passed in a year or so, and we'll be able to have this one-of-a-kind artwork sold downtown, which is something that we'll be able to do with the downtown Arts Overlay District, which we currently have, and not much going on with Live Workspace in the area, which I'd like to see happen down there. So, those are the types of things that I'm already doing. I do have a background in management from my family business and from the eight years that I worked at a company called Imagine, which is now, of course, moving into the city. So, I have the background in contracts. I have the background in invoicing and budgeting as well. And I respectfully ask for your vote on November 3rd. I appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to again thank the candidates and the panelists for coming tonight. I would also like to thank FRG TV for simulcasting tonight's forum. And I also want to thank our FRC Media staff working behind the scenes to provide this production for you tonight under the leadership of Stephen Rice, also Michelle Dumas, Adam Kitchen, Ben Farabini, and Lucy Cabral, who was our timekeeper tonight. Just as a reminder, we'll be holding a forum this Monday, October 26th, at 6:00 p.m., featuring the candidates running for school committees. the candidates running for school committee, so we ask that you join us at that time. You can watch a replay of this forum and find out more about all the candidates running for office in Fall River by tuning into FRC TV Channel 95 or also visiting our website, frmedia.org or frconnect.org. Also, make sure to join us on Tuesday night, November 3rd, as we will be collaborating with FRG TV beginning at 8:00 p.m. to provide live coverage of the results on election night. For all of us here at FRC Media, thanks for watching. I'm Keith Tebow. Have a good night.